Okay, I'd like to call a meeting of the Planning, Zoning and Billy Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Tolemy.
Here.
Alderman Suback.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Paisak. Alderman Coles.
Yeah.
Alderman Kinnate.
Here. Okay, next item is approval in minutes of September fourteenth, two thousand and six. Their motion to approve.
So moved.
On a question?
On a question. But it's more related to the beginning of the meeting that I understand that this meeting will be quite lengthy and the finance and administration meeting will be probably about ten minutes. So would we want to defer and go first as in the initial schedule?
I think we should go through this.
That's fine.
We'll go through this one. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next item is report and recommendation case number zero six S U nine. Genuine Parts Company doing business as Napa Auto. Three seventy-two West Irving Park special use permit request with lot consolidation. Overall, the petitioners and contract purchasers Genuine Auto Parts Company are requesting a special use and re-subdivision to allow for the consolidation of three parcels into one in a construction and use of a six thousand square foot facility which will house an automotive parts retail use in conjunction with a warehouse and office use. The subject site is currently vacated, vacant. It is located on south side of Irving Park between Addison Road and Dalewood Avenue. Proposed development other than requiring special use will comply with all other zoning requirements. Are the petitioners here this evening? Gentlemen, would you like to basically tell us what you want to do and...
My name is Bill Oswald. I'm an architect and I work with Genuine Parts Company in Atlanta, Georgia. And what we're proposing to do is to build a six thousand square foot auto parts retail store. And it'll have approximately three thousand square feet of retail floor space and then the remainder of the three thousand square, or the remainder of the six thousand square feet will be for warehousing and storage of parts. And we will be providing thirty-one parking spaces on the site and landscaping it per your code. The issue that we've been trying to tackle is that in the B-two zone, the auto parts retail is not allowed per the code. And so we had sought a variance for that with the BZA and that was denied last month. And we're here tonight seeking approval of the auto parts retail in the B-two zone.
Okay. Looking this over and at my initial problem with it would be the proximity to Addison Road. Ingress and egress. Now, they suggested solving the problem by having a right in, right out ingress, egress. Unfortunately, we have that just on the other side by the gas station and the Burger King and it is not adhered to. It is violated all the time, creating a lot of traffic problems. I could just see somebody going west on Irving Park. There is, it's just at the beginning of the turn lane into the Jewel Osco Lot. That close proximity to me just says, just screams of disaster, which is situation we have now. And I realize you did a traffic study on it, said it would be very little impact. But one or two errant turners, left turners there create a tremendous problem. That's my major concern and if that'd be one of the reasons not to approve it, that would be mine.
Okay, my traffic engineer is here. I'd like for him to speak to that.
Thank you. My name is Luay Abuna, A-B-O-N-A, traffic engineer with KLOA. We're located in Rosemont, Illinois. And we did do the traffic study that looked at the impact. And you are correct in terms of the location of the driveway. It is in between the left turn lanes, that one that goes into Addison, the other one that goes into Dalewood. Normally, we would concur that it could become potentially a problem. However, given the nature of this facility, it's a very low traffic generator. We do not anticipate a lot of traffic turning either left or right into the facility. We're talking about eight, ten trips during the peak hours. So from that standpoint alone, the traffic is very, very, very low. In addition, when we took the counts at Addison and Irving Park, we, what we noticed is that the left turns at the light going east to north into the Jewel Shopping Center, those left turners do not back up to the point where it's going to extend to where we want to put the driveway. So what that says that people desiring to turn left into our site could sit on that taper area away from the Irving Park westbound traffic, so they're not blocking it through traffic. We feel with that, that we are able to shelter them, that they may be able to make a left in. The left out, obviously, you know, they're going to have to wait for gaps in both directions, just like, you know, any vehicle out of Dalewood or out of the unsignalized access from the Jewel, they would, they would wait for the gaps to make the left out. So we feel that the full access is doable. Obviously, it's a necessity to make sure that this business becomes a viable business. Restricting it would potentially create some additional conflicts in terms of people making U-turns or violating the restriction because they want to enter the site or they enter it and then they want to make a left out. They realize they can't make it. They either violate the restriction or make a right and then make a U-turn at the signal and move back west. So we think by restricting it, you're probably going to create more problems than you'd be solving. And finally, I-DOT, which has jurisdiction over the roadway, we approached them initially at the initial planning stages of the site and they reviewed the access and their concurrence relative to what we're proposing in terms of full access. We have a letter from them indicating that and we believe with their concurrence that this access should be, should be approved. Thank you.
Alderman Tolemy?
Yeah, I looked over, I looked over what you're proposing and, you know, I guess I'll be a little bit more straightforward. I don't know if this truly is in the, is in the best interest of the city long term. Okay, putting in another auto parts store. There's one roughly about a block and a half away. We have one right out front across the other side of the street here in Wooddale. And we're already known for, you know, cleaners and hair places. I don't think we really want to look at putting, you know, that this really would be in the best interest of the city. Being that you need the special use, I don't know, you know, if it really would make sense for us to go ahead and do that. I mean, at this point, I think I would have to concur with, with the zoning board and also vote to deny. And it would be based on, you know, my concern for what really is going to go in there, in that area.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand something and then I'm going to make a comment that when you're speaking about the traffic flow and are you saying that when you're on Addison Road and you're making a left on Irving Park Road that you would actually make the left beforehand and you have rights from the bank to turn left before Irving Park?
No.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, I did not follow that. I'm sorry.
When you were referencing making a left at Addison and Irving?
I was referring to the people that are currently making the left at the light going east on Irving Park, north into, into the shopping center.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is when we, when we took counts at that intersection and we measured the queues that are, that build up at the light, that those left turns do not regularly, regularly back up to where the location of the driveway we want to put on Irving Park Road, which means that our cars conceivably could sit on the, on the taper area of the left turn lane waiting to make a left into the site. So they're not sitting and blocking the through lane of traffic going westbound on Irving Park Road.
Yes, okay, thank you. And then my general comment would be, I'm in agreement with Alderman Tolemy that we're, we're really looking for, to put businesses the way it's zoned today and that it, it isn't really in the best interest of the city to have a warehouse type situation there. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
I got a question. You said there's only ten trips during the daytime. It says weekdays P.M., ten trips in and out. That's what you claim, right? Are you, how many trucks do you, do you figure on delivery? Question. How many trucks do you figure on delivery?
Well, normally, we have one over the road truck per day that we would figure and then...
No, I'm talking about delivering to the auto parts, to the auto parts, to gas stations and garages and stuff like that. How many trucks?
I understand.
Approximately. Two, three?
Probably four or five.
Four or five?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you have four or five that's going in and out, more than one time a day, that's more than ten trips in and out. You've got a truck that's coming in and you've got a truck that's going out and you've got five of them. And that means five trips, that's more than ten, they go out more than one time a day.
Yeah.
So you're talking, this is, this is, this is all wet here.
Well, no, just to clarify...
Excuse my language, but that's what I think. It's all wet.
Well, let me clarify it. This is only during the peak hour. This is in one hour. So this is during the evening peak hour between five and six. So what, what this is saying during that hour, we estimate that the facility will generate ten trips in and ten trips out. This is not, this is not for the entire day.
You said between four-thirty and five o'clock, five-thirty.
Right. So this is just for one hour. It's not for the entire day. So the entire day would be obviously more and would, would include, you know, any truck movements and delivery movements and so forth.
Okay. I disagree with you, but that's okay.
Alderman Suback?
What was the percentage that was going to be retail versus warehouse?
The layout of the building is about fifty percent retail and then fifty percent warehouse. And that, that use is, you know, we view this as a retail store. When we are interested in warehousing large amounts of parts, we obviously build a bigger warehouse. This would not be an efficient warehouse use. I think that it gets characterized as a warehouse and there is storage of parts there. But we view this as a retail use. And I, I wanted to speak to Mr. Tolemy's comment. I hope I pronounced your name right. I'm sorry if I didn't. The company has analyzed the business factors here and it's a business decision on their part that they would like to be here. And I understand your point about what the city wants to see along Irving Park Road. And I really can't do anything about that. I can't defend that. But the company has done quite a bit of analysis and they are estimating about two-point-three million dollars a year in sales out of this facility. And, and that would be mostly retail sales with probably sixty, sixty-three percent retail, sixty-six percent retail and thirty-three percent wholesale.
Okay.
I don't think I left the, thank you. I saw the floor right. Yeah, you're kind of helping me make my point. I understand this is zoned currently B-two, but, you know, what other, and there are traffic problems over there, but what business, you know, other businesses that might fit in that without the special use might have more traffic problems? I mean, do we want a Starbucks there that's going to draw more traffic than the auto parts store and maybe have less amount in sales tax? And certainly in a perfect world, we wouldn't have as many auto parts stores that we have. But, you know, I don't think that's our decision to make this more of a market condition. And if they come in and the other stores go out, there'll be other opportunities for those vacancies. But, you know, we've been harping that we want additional retail and we have the opportunity to get it on a vacant piece of property. Sure, I wish they were selling ice cream cones or something, the kids walking up and down. But the reality is it's, it's a vacant space now. And I'm more concerned with, you know, what, what is the building going to look like? What building materials you're going to have? Because it is along Irving Park Road on our corridor. But if it's going to be an attractive building, any business there is going to have traffic problems. So if we're not going to let this business go in there, what business are we going to let go in there under the B-two zoning? So can you tell me a little bit about your, the building itself? And do you have any renderings of what we can expect this is going to look like?
I do have some renderings if you want to, Ross, if you want to put this on the overhead. These are, the renderings, it's a little bit hard to see. Adjust that. But the building is, it's a six thousand square foot building. It is made out of split face concrete block, which is the same material that this municipal building is made out of. And we use a blue color in the upper portion and a gray color in the lower portion. And then this corner with the glass over here is the retail entrance. And that would be on the northeast corner. I have to get my bearings. That's, that would be the elevation. It says south elevation. It'd be looking south. That's the elevation that would be facing Irving Park Road. And then this elevation over here is the one that would be facing the TCF Bank. I think the words are backwards as far as the directions, but that's the, those two at the top are the ones that would be seen by the public. The other two, this would face the retail next door to us and then that, of course, would face the residential properties that are to the rear of us.
And are you willing to install some kind of board-on-board fence to buffer between your building and the residential?
Yes, we would be willing to do that.
And with respect to like the truck traffic, what size trucks are making deliveries? And is there a delivery bay or are we bringing a semi truck in to make deliveries for Napa?
It's a semi truck, but they do not use a traditional loading dock. This, this back overhead door is at grade and the materials are lowered off the truck and wheeled in. And it's usually there at off-hours. So the truck would be in the parking lot, basically, back at the back end of the parking lot, unloading.
And as far as maybe for your engineer, maybe for Roger? We talked, the staff memo talked about what they described as a pork chop. And I agree with the chairman that, you know, what happens over at the Burger King and the, nobody follows that right now. But can't we make this a stronger right in, right out only so that you really can't go left across, across the other side of traffic?
I think that, I think that there are situations where you can't come up with a, with a better configuration. And I'm just wondering, do you possibly know of any off the top of your head, Gary? What might be placed in there that would be more of a deterrent for the right in, right out? That's true, too.
But we can be more restrictive than that out if the petitioners agreed that, you know, we want to make sure that people are not able to make that left-hand turn and cause traffic problems.
I do believe that that could be achieved because I think that if you design the barrier in such a way as to make it more of a, a more acute turn to the right, then you wouldn't have people trying to circumvent it by going around and then making a left around it like they do at Burger King.
There is, yeah, there is a certain limit of how much you can channelize the traffic because it comes to a point, you don't want to channelize them extremely to the point where they can't see a car coming on Irving Park Road. You don't want them to be looking over their shoulder. I-DOT has their design standards, you know, with the pork chop, you know, medium being a certain width, the radiuses being of a certain dimension. But in reality, if, if a driver wants to violate the restriction, they will do it. They are able to do it.
One last question, Mr. Chairman. I think, I'm glad the attorney's here tonight. With the special use, we have the right to put certain conditions, you know, upon that special use permit. For the record, he's nodding his head, that's good. Can Napa control like when it gets the semi trucks' delivery so that they're coming in? And, you know, it's not allowed for drop-offs in the pickups, you know, during, you know, peak traffic hours over there so that we're not going to have your semi truck backing up Addison Road or backing up Irving Park Road between the hours of, you know, four to six and, you know, seven to nine? Is that something that Napa could agree to as a condition of the special use?
Yes, it is. And I, I want to go further. You know, our, our responsibility as citizens is that we want to cooperate with, with this board and we would be willing to install the pork chop as a, as a compromise on that traffic issue. I think that the point has been well made of the citizen's concern and we would be willing to do that.
But you're also willing to put restrictions on when you're going to have drop-offs?
Yes, sir.
I mean, and then becomes an enforcement issue, but we have the special use permit. And if all of a sudden they don't follow it, we're going to have a hearing and they're going to pull their special use. And now Napa just built the big building where they can't have trucks deliver anymore. So certainly, I'm sure they would abide by it as they're saying tonight and we could have easy enforcement if it becomes a problem in the future. So at first, I wasn't that in favor of it, but, you know, as I see it, it's a vacant piece. I don't know what better is to go there. Thank you.
Alderman Shockey and Alderman Coles?
Yeah, as a consul, we've talked about what we want to do to beautify Irving Park Road. And I'm just not sure that a, a cinder block building, basically, except for the entrance area, is going to look well over there. We've got some small stores next door to it, to the west of it, but they're glass-fronted. And here we'll have a cinder block front on this, most of it, two-thirds of the front and the majority of the side, of course. So as the aesthetics said, bother me on it. I envision something a little bit nicer, small stores of some kind over there to match with what's already there. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
Is this going to replace the store in Addison? The Napa store in Addison?
I don't believe it will, sir. I really am not able to speak to that.
That's, that's in what we call a spot that you don't even know there's an auto parts store in there. All right.
Alderman Tolemy?
Just a quick question. And I'm going to throw this out. If this were approved, is there any way you could change? I mean, I'm guessing, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that this, this particular building is like the standard, you know, wherever you go, this is what you put up?
It is, sir. It is a prototype.
Have they ever, you know, have they ever done something different, like with the face of the building? You know, to, to make it look better?
Yes, they have. And we, we have been doing some studies on this particular issue because it came up at the zoning board of appeals. And we have been looking at...
Because, you know, I'll be honest with you, nobody wants a block building. And that's basically what you, what you're putting up.
Yeah.
You know?
There is a, there's a product. We, we like to build out a block because it's efficient. Now, there's, there's a product that's on the market that we would like to use, which is still a block, but it is a different module than an eight-by-sixteen. It's a, it's like a half of a block and you lay it up like brick and it's called Quick Brick. And we would like to use that here as a compromise on the aesthetics of this, if that would be...
Do we know what, do we have any?
Possible.
Can I ask, Roger, John, Russ, do we, do we know what that's like, Gary?
Just based on his description and not doing any research, it sounds exactly like the product we're going to be using for the commuter train depot building.
Really? Commuter train?
It's good enough for the train station. It must be good enough for Napa. Would you guys be willing to come back with some, because those are marginal renderings at best, but maybe some additional renderings showing with this different block, showing some additional landscaping of what we could do to...
I have something with me if you don't mind me showing that.
Well, one of the other thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, one of the other things I'd like to do is you mentioned, you know, you're looking at potential revenue or sales of two-point-three million. What I would like to do is ask the finance director if we could run that and basically come back and tell us, or, you know, if you can do it off the top of your head, tell us what does that mean to us? Can you, can you? That's pretty much what I thought. Okay? That's, that's pretty much what I thought. So, you know, I mean, when, you know, you throw out two-point, you know, two-point-three million and we look at twenty-three thousand dollars more a year, you know, again, for, for the area, I mean, this is an area that we've talked about possibly looking down the road at, at doing a TIF in that area to try and redevelop that whole area, redevelop. I mean, I'll be honest with you, you know what? If the bank had needed a variation or permit to come in here and put themselves on that corner, they wouldn't have gotten it. Nobody here in this council wanted another bank and, you know, especially around that corner. But unfortunately, the way it was zoned, they were able to come in and do exactly what they wanted to do without, you know, with completely bypassing us. Okay? But that bank wouldn't have been there. You know, because again, you know, we're trying to, what we're trying to do, and please try and understand where I'm coming from, we're trying to look at our whole corridor, you know, from border to border and what can we do to enhance the whole corridor that's going to bring in and generate, you know, new business for the community, more, you know, more commercial, more retail for the whole community. And, you know, you, you've, you've probably been here a few times, so you've driven that corridor, so you know we have today. And, you know, I mean, what I would say to you is if you could find another area, you know, but in, you know, along Irving Park within the city, you know, maybe we would consider that. But in that particular location, what we're trying to look at is, again, is long-term. And, you know, Alderman Suback mentioned, while, you know, it's a vacant piece of property. Yes, it's vacant today, you know, and those stores that are directly to the west of it, they, there's, there's somebody in there today. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be there forever. If we are doing our job right and planning for the future, you know, we could be looking at a development, you know, a bigger development that's going to go into that whole area, you know, which would bring in a lot more than twenty-three thousand dollars a year. I mean, I, I'm not saying twenty-three thousand isn't a lot, okay? But I honestly believe that that property in that area potentially could generate a whole lot more than twenty-three thousand dollars. And to put up another, you know, to put up another, you know, auto parts store, I mean, it's just, from my perspective, that's not really what I, I know as a resident of the city. That's not really what I want to see there. I mean, I didn't want to see the bank. I, I don't want to see another auto parts store. You know, so I'm, you know, I'm sorry. How I personally feel.
I appreciate your opinion.
Alderman Suback?
My guess is if we're, how much frontage do you have on Irving Park Road? How much? I think I heard somebody say about a hundred and sixty. It's in the ballpark. Yeah, it's not that, I mean, that is not that large of a piece. And if I was to tell Maggie that for every hundred-and-twenty-three feet of frontage on Irving Park Road, we're going to generate twenty-three thousand dollars of sales tax, Maggie's going to walk home smiling, saying, "We're good to go." Right, Maggie? I mean, that's not a large parcel. And I, again, I agree with Alderman Tolemy. I'm not thrilled about another auto parts store, but it's, it could be a lot worse. And we've been talking about redevelopment. We've talked about trying to get, generate sales tax. And that's what this is going to do into the businesses next to it. Sure, that strip mall is old and aging. In a perfect world, somebody would take all that out. But you know what? There's four thriving businesses in there. There's a local restaurant. There's a hair salon that's been there for probably thirty years. There's the diet place that's in there. I mean, there's four businesses that are in there. So they might have thirty-year leases in there. So to say that we, we don't want this to be developed because we want to hopefully have somebody take it all out, you know, I, I think be careful what you ask for because you might not get it. This is something that, here's a business that wants to come in on a hundred-and-sixty feet of frontage, they're going to generate twenty-three thousand dollars of sales tax. You know, I wish you were selling something more consumer-friendly for the residents of Wooddale, but I think at some point you have to take what you can get. And on this site, you know, it's more than the bank's generating for us in the corner.
The problem that I see right now, Autozone, which is up in the shopping center, seems to be doing okay. And they took a store that had been vacant for quite a while and had changed hands a number of times. They seem to be the one... had changed hands a number of times, they seem to be the one stable unit in there now for that location. Some years ago, if you remember, on Wooddale Road, we put in an auto parts store next door to each other or in the same block, one had Mark Auto in the other one, and one on one under, and I would just hate to see that you come in, you build this, this building and that, and maybe the economy or the area can't support two major auto parts stores. So one of them goes, goes vacant again. You know, again, this, this is marketing, but from what happened in the past, from what I remember, that was a very poor choice on our part, because one of, one of the stores did go out, I think, within a year or so. The other one was built almost like a box out of the slab-type material, and I think it looks, it's not the most aesthetic building out there. So I don't know, you know, you burn once, I, I think you get a little eerie of it. That's, that's my take. Subak?
AutoZone is a tenant in that space, and, and I don't think it's proper for us as a board to say that we, we, you know, that's a market condition, that is a, a business decision that NAPA's making on a location, and for all we know, this will get denied tonight, and then the landlord at Georgetown is throwing out AutoZone next week because their lease is up, and now we don't have either of the sales tax. So I think that's too much speculation, that is a market condition, that's a business decision by NAPA. I'm sure NAPA's not gonna build a building that's gonna cost roughly how much to build?
It's $500,000.
$500,000 a building without understanding what the market conditions are, and, you know, it, it's the free enterprise, and, and we don't know if AutoZone's gonna be there next week.
Any other comments or something? Would the board like to see a rendering of a kind of an improved building facade to this before a decision is made, or would you like to? I mean, the way it was presented on the first drawings and that, I, I don't like that at all. I don't think it has no appeal on it, and if they could somehow enhance it to make, you know, that part of our corridor look more aesthetic, would you be willing to do that? Or you said you could change it with the different black, is this the other block design?
This, this is a different color scheme, but it is a different block, and the, the block, and I, I don't know if it's the same block that's gonna be used on the train station, but it, it appears to be brick, and that's the reason that that product is marketed.
Okay, oh, I see.
Yeah, and it's, it's laid up like brick, it has a, a different proportion than a block does. It is larger than a modular brick like you might find in a residence, and it's not the same module you would find on a mall when they use jumbo brick, it's, it has its own look, but it is, it is a block product, it's four inches by 16 instead of eight by 16, and it does look like brick when it's laid up. And what we've done is, we've put in some different colors here to, to make some bands to this. There's, there's only so much you can do to a rectangular box, and this is what the company has asked me to offer in response to the criticisms of the first set of drawings that we submitted.
Okay. Any further comments? All right, then I'd like to make a motion to approve a special use to permit an auto parts retail use in conjunction with warehouse and office use. You have a second?
Second.
Any question?
On the final approval, I would put additional requirements that we discussed, but I, I think it might fail on the old, on the vote itself, but before it went to council, I'd wanna put the additional requirements for landscaping the, the right turn in, right turn out, but we can handle that on the council level.
All right, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Tolemy?
No.
Alderman Subak?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
No.
Alderman Coles?
I'm questioning, I'd like to see the building first before I vote. I'll say yes, but on conditions that I see the plans and everything.
Alderman, can I?
No. Okay, motion fails. Okay, the next item then is the case number 06Z10, J.D. Development LLC, 480 Forest Preserve Drive, rezoning from R1 to R3, single-family residence to build a seven-lot subdivision. And a petitioner's here?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Joe Baranco, I'm Vice President of J.D. Land Development.